Hello, welcome. So Stephanie laid out the political strategic situation and I'd like to bring into discussion something that our organization just did last weekend, which was this conference in Germany, which is now up on our website. But LaRouche is now raising the question, not simply of momentary survival, which is necessary. Yes, we need to immediately survive. You know, yes, the amount of money that the states need to survive, to save lives, to fund our police, to fund our fire stations, is only several hundred billion dollars, you know, which is nothing compared to the 20 trillion we've given to Wall Street. So that's Glass-Steagall is for one, simply an immediate survival question, which I know that everyone is very well acquainted with. Everybody in this population understands that we are at a point of extreme crisis and if we don't completely change the direction of this country, they're very afraid for their children's future. I know that that's the sentiment. And people are looking in that context for a clear solution, which as Stephanie just demonstrated with the discussion around Glass-Steagall, is really being put out there by LaRouche's movement and our work through getting this out through both parties' networks, through the unions, as we've seen through the union funeral procession for the soul of the Democratic Party here in New Jersey, other labor leaders like the Machinist Union, the National AFL-CIO calling for Glass-Steagall. You're seeing a complete shift in all institutions that represent the middle class, even amongst Democratic leaders of Congress breaking with Obama over his cuts to Social Security and similar Medicare and these entitlement programs. Even Republicans really don't want to cut Social Security. They really, really don't. The fact that Obama is actually creating a fight with Nancy Pelosi, I mean, did you ever think that was possible? That Nancy Pelosi would have to tell Obama she doesn't agree with him because she doesn't want to cut Social Security. Even she knows, and I didn't even think she was human. But now, she actually said, you know, "No, we can't do that, Obama. Sorry, that even goes beyond me." These are questions. It is, you know, imminent questions for the immediate survival of the human race right now in every way. Also, this thing about the Consumer Price Index, they're actually trying to change the rating of the Consumer Price Index so that, you know, if the price of steak goes up, well, we don't have to include that because that person could eat chicken. And this is how they'll be rating, you know, the prices going up for Social Security. Well, you don't need a cost of living increase because you don't have to eat steak. And this is happening across the board. This is really, really a genocidal policy. And that's the point that Lynn made, is that the enemy is so much at the end of their rope that it's becoming blatant. They're becoming obvious and blatant with what they have to do. It's so clear. I mean, this thing about the debt ceiling, the austerity necessary, I mean, even discussion of a sovereign default of the United States debt, I mean, this is insane. They're trying to put the United States in a situation like Greece or Ireland where the interests of our people would be put under an international financial power, just like they're trying to impose on Greece right now, where the Greek parliament would have no say over, you know, wages or even things like, you know, the sovereign property of Greece, like the Parthenon, could be sold off by whoever manages Greek debt. Well, they're putting the United States in that same type of discussion. You know, what does our Constitution say? Full face and credit of the United States as Hamilton set up based not off of a monetary system, not off of a monetary value of a private bank, but off of the value of what makes your nation a nation, which is its people, its science, how you're taking care of your people, and how you're creating a future for those people, and what is human. Those are what take precedent as value. And so that, yeah, I mean, the contrast between these two policies is just obvious. So, but we have a problem, which is that a bunch of these economists, the people leading these nations of the world still today, of Europe, United States, all the leading economists, they're still, they agree that we need Glass-Steagall, and they agree that probably the system's at the end of the rope, but there's still not really an ulterior system, an ulterior idea being proposed. And that's the context in which you get this conference and that LaRouche just sponsored in Germany last week, which was a discussion, was sort of equivalent to a Council of Florence that was instrumental in creating the Renaissance in Europe, was the idea of a higher idea of man through the connection of science, music, state's craft, and economy. And what actually unifies these things? That these things aren't actually separate. It's not like one person's an artist, one person likes to do some type of science in his isolated field, you know, study biology under a microscope or something, and then someone else is an accountant and they like to crunch numbers, so that's their role in society, and, you know, well, so-and-so likes their type of music and all this kind of thing. But we had a series of presentations which brought these ideas together and demonstrated an ecumenical principle, which is that mankind is united through, in all of these different fields, of mankind's activity, art, science, and economy are unified by a principle of mind. A principle of mind that's coherent with how the universe itself is organized. And that is actually the principle of economy. And so in light of that, I wanted to bring up some questions that LaRouche has been writing about quite a bit recently, where he says, "We have to get out of our state that we are, well, the five senses that we were born with as if in a box." Infants, they got five senses. You know, human beings, when they die, in a sense, we still have five senses, but mankind as a whole has much greater than five senses. And just to start that question, I'd like to first pose a challenge, just put the question of, well, if that's true, if we're not simply a product of what we can sense, if man can know more than what we can simply see, hear, taste, and touch, if mankind can know the universe without being subject to simply those five senses, then how is it that we know the universe? And so first, I'd like to give an example from Bach. So this is just a short piece from The Art of the Fugue, and we're going to listen to it a couple of times. So first, you can just listen to it, it's about two minutes, and, yeah, just listen to it and have fun the first time. Okay, now this, maybe people aren't accustomed to always listening to music of this quality, so I wanted to play it a couple of times because there's more going on than you get in, you know, jazz or rock or something like that. So it takes, you'll find that it actually does take thought to even listen to this music, which is interesting. Listening is actually an active cognitive experience. But I'd just like to pose a question with something to think about this time when you listen to it. One, being to think about the interplay of the different voices. How are they responding to each other, or where are these voices coming from? You can listen to that. Instead of just listening to the sounds as a one, start to listen to the relationships. But then, two, after doing that, then start to think about, if you can, to notice what your mind is doing as you're listening to it. Not just what the voices are doing, but see if you can listen to what your mind is doing as you're listening to the music. Okay, so maybe people got something of a sense of that, something you can continue to work on, think about. It's not a process that really has an end. But then also, to think about, so now, we have one example of the mind in motion, where it was in an active process of contrasting two ideas, two or more ideas. You had these different voices that were in interplay, and it caused your mind to do something which is even different than what those voices themselves were literally doing. There was an existence of an idea or something subsuming the entire piece itself, which wasn't existing in any of the parts themselves. And that thing became a one actually in your mind. But so now, take that idea because it's not just isolated to the realm of concepts entering your mind, but then also think about the question of sense perception, that at one given moment, we have five sense perceptions going on. How is it, one, that our mind actually makes a unified idea out of those sense impressions? That itself is actually a refutation of the idea that the soul is just a blank slate, that man is just a product of our experiences, just walking around, experiencing and learning and memorizing things, but that we actually are constantly actively forming a concept. We can't exist without forming a concept with an intention even. So that brings in another question of sense perception. But then you get to this, another question of, well, then we can even go beyond these five senses. Then we have available to ourselves as mankind a much greater realm of sense experiences than even these. And these are in the realm of so-called unseen principles, like electromagnetism just being one example. And if people have been studying our website, they probably, you know, you guys have heard about this relationship of where the solar system is headed in the galaxy. That's really where we're at in time, is we're actually at a moment of a very interesting galactic perspective, which is that, you know, our solar system is now about three million years into a 62-million-year cycle, at a point which we're going to be bombarded, we are being bombarded with much more cosmic radiation than we would have been four million years ago. And all the five great extinctions in Earth's history have been at this point of transition, have been above the galactic plane into the realm that we're now entering as a human species. But we are not actually subject to it in the same way that the dinosaurs or these other species were. Because I know everyone gets kind of scared when you bring that up, they're like, dang it, you know, on top of everything, we're going extinct? But the point is actually that, no, we don't have to. Just like we don't have to be subject to the monetary crisis right now, we don't have to be subject to this one either, if we actually use that part of ourself which is human, which economy really is based around, which is our creativity. The exact thing that Obama is attacking when he cuts NASA and says we can't forecast earthquakes. And I hope people, you know, said a prayer for the fact that the last space shuttle was just launched. Well, for the fact, well, this really should not be the last one. Let's say it's in a coma, because we're going to bring this thing back. But this is, yeah, this... Yeah, because this is criminal. Yeah, so then just thinking about some other characteristics of this fact that human beings are not just simply wandering around in a tactile universe where we're just victim to things that hit us, like asteroids that are going to run into us and knock, you know, knock us out or something, like they say it happened with the dinosaurs. But, well, there's evidence that it's not just those things, but it's energetic processes that unite the Earth to the Sun and the rest of the galaxy and the rest of the universe, that there's energetic processes constantly affecting life on Earth and affecting things like natural disasters, like tornadoes, earthquakes, and volcanoes. Now, there's been, one of the presentations at this conference is on this question of forecasting earthquakes, which I highly recommend people to look at from Sergey Polynets, where he's really creating an awesome fight in the scientific community about the fact that it's not statistical forecasting of rocks moving that's going to allow you to predict an earthquake, because that gives you about a 1% chance. But he demonstrates that there's plenty of different precursors of different qualities that have been shown to be associated with earthquakes. Out of the five recent ones, five recent large earthquakes have all had instrumentation which allowed us to detect them, you know, in the month ahead, five days ahead, or which would allow us to set up a warning system to evacuate people so we could save millions of lives and we don't have to die because of these things. And these are things such as what they call ELF, extremely low frequency waves, wavelengths, they have detectors for these, radio waves, these are in the radio wave frequency, I believe, infrared, which is temperature change. He goes through that a lot. And this is something interesting, that if you have increased cosmic radiation affecting the Earth environment, which happens in a relationship with the Sun, which Diane's going to talk about a bit more, you actually allow for more cloud formation, which itself can change the temperature. So that's, and there's, he gives an example that this affected Katrina, for example, that because, that there was a magnetic storm actually right before Katrina, which because of this ionization and the fact that the particles coming in, the cosmic radiation, so-called particles, anyway, stimulate cloud formation in clusters, you know, they create the seed crystals for clouds to form. And so this will change the temperature because then heat will be released. It's called latent, he calls it latent heat, yeah, it's latent heat. Because there's condensation, so heat is released, changes the temperature, and then this affects the weather. And so this Katrina was, you know, probably already there, but there was an eight-degree drop in temperature, which is very much, which catalyzed that storm. So that's one example. He also says that you can then direct tornadoes by doing similar processes yourself to direct them out of harm's way. And he gives an example of that being done as well. So those are just a couple examples of the fact that it's, there's just a complete correlation between these energetic processes of the Sun and things on life. I mean, how did life even form? How did our biosphere even form as it is? How did plants take the form that they do? How did animals take the form that they do, which is really based off of plants? Where do plants get their energy? Where do they get their form? It's from the Sun. That's, I mean, they developed so that they could take in solar radiation and convert it, you know, using chlorophyll, that they could convert this energy, you know, whatever that is, energy from the Sun, that they could convert it into usable matter, which all life on the planet uses. And human beings use it, and we use it to feed our brains, and then we do things like build spaceships, just one example, and then we actually go out and we change the universe with the technologies that we develop as a result of using this energy from the Sun. And just, yeah, and you also see the fact that this process is occurring through things like the fact that animals can predict earthquakes. How can they do that? What are they sensing that human beings necessarily aren't? And there's a lot of, people know the case of birds, for example, that the birds navigate according to the magnetic field. Well, that's actually demonstrated, that's true. They've got a couple of different sensors, one in their eye and one in their beak. I've got an image of the pigeons. Oh, well, we'll just go through them. This is, so this is the, that's what the environment that the Earth is in, plasmosphere. This is caused by plasma from the Sun hitting our atmosphere and creating this magnetic effect. Well, sorry, it's not that simple. We have our own magnetic field, and we're getting affected by the plasma from the Sun, and it creates this dynamic environment. So that's what's going on there. But the next one, this is one visible effect of it, is the northern lights. And then this, this is an example of animals sensing this, where they did an experiment with lobsters. If you take lobsters out of their environment and you put them, you know, in a cage, and these are baby lobsters, they said, "Well, will these lobsters be able to find their way back to their original home if we take them out of it?" And so they put them, they took them away, and they put them in an artificial environment where they would simulate the Earth's magnetic field, and the lobsters would attempt to go back in their cage in the direction that their home was in, that was similar to the way that the artificial magnetic field occurred within the cage. It was, they did it as if they were in the wild. So that happened with lobsters, there's a lot of examples actually. And then the next one is pigeons, I believe, or European robins. Yeah, they just did a similar thing. This is, if the birds were in their cage, all these little triangles, that's where the birds were trying to go. And so the first one, you see north is equivalent to magnetic north, so that's, you know, what it would actually be in the wild. Then in their cages, you see that the magnetic north is shifted, and that they still attempt to go towards magnetic north. So, yeah, that's just a couple examples of the fact that this greater sensorium, greater than simply our five, you know, human senses we generally think of, they're existing out there. There is a field out there that's completely active that is affecting things like volcanoes, earthquakes, and such things that we are now getting an increase of. And we just had a record number of storms in the United States, and we don't know the exact correlation, but we know that we are entering a period of great change in our galactic environment. And if we're a human species and we've got the science to deal with it, we, you know, it's simply a matter of common sense and survival that we apply those, that understanding, through setting up a system of different types of instruments as an international policy that could warn against, you know, detect and warn against the disasters, and also just start to understand it for the next thousand generations down the line or so. And this is an interesting point too. If we start to expand our idea of economy from the standpoint of the next year or even 10 years, or how do we survive, you know, through what we need to produce to maintain our population, the more think about it... The more think about it as, what is economy based off of all human beings that have ever existed and will ever exist? What is economy from that standpoint? And then you can start to think about it from the process of going from one discovery to the next discovery. How do you act now such that you can make the future scientific discovery you need to support your population in the future? People will never know. And that's, there's a lot, lots to think about that, with that, just putting that out there. But that's the direction we have to start going into as human society, that even if we were to simply implement Glass-Steagall, if we don't start using that which is human right now, we're not going to get out of this collapse. But it's also that this is actually the fuel to do it. This is why, this is why we can win. And this is what actually makes, you know, the so-called less powerful, you know, human forces or something, the ones that aren't controlling the financial system, this is what makes that aspect more powerful, is the mind. That's what this British oligarchy is so afraid of in the United States, is that we actually defend that part of humanity, that our nation was built off of that part of humanity, that that's what the preamble of our constitution is really saying. It's saying the posterity. There's, and what does that mean? If you're setting up a policy for a nation based off of future generations, what do you have to do to ensure that those generations have something better? That's a principle. You're going to have to act on a principle. And just for one tangible example of that, sort of a go-between between what I've just brought up and what Diane's about to go into, is we have a good video just produced on our website looking at Nowapa, how mankind, you know, can do something never done before through the policy of Glass-Steagall.
Faced with unrelenting drought, the South and Southwest United States continue to be consumed by major wildfires. They've ravaged and are still being fought in East and West Texas, New Mexico, and Arizona, which faced its worst wildfire in history. Texas state officials have repeatedly asked for a...